All right, good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 27th. It is 7:02 PM. This is the meeting of the Town Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The following Town Council members are present in chambers. Mauer, Martin, Lapellis, Formicella, O'Rourke, Rooney, Wales. Here virtually is basic acoustica. And Kevin Reed is currently absent, but if he shows up, we'll note that on the record. All right. If there are no objections, I'm going to pass the consent calendar. Presented Asset Communication Items A through O, the incorporation of the minutes of a meeting. Item five, public participation. I will begin with those who are here in Town Council chambers. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate? Step forward, name and address for the record, please.
Jason DuBecque, 231 Route 8, St. Petersburg, Vermont, regards to Spring Hill Road closure. I actually owe you an apology, a whole Town Council apology. I promised I'd be here every meeting. Two weeks ago, we had a blizzard that Monday night, four and a half feet of snow, and I couldn't attend. And I might not be able to be here in the future because my learning on the pocket and the oral policy files, which makes sense, but I'll be here afterwards, hopefully to close. But your decision is really wrong. Anybody that's talked to Mr. Schultz, the Town Planner, for more than four minutes, have learned his level of education and how long he's done this for and everything else. This dumb guy who cuts trees into smaller pieces got him to agree that he misspoke how well or how you claim of him, but in my mind, he was wrong, and I think that's when he actually met with that. So when he was wrong, planning and zoning voted on it for him, and then you guys. And to take away a road that's always been there, which is absolutely wrong. It's your job to investigate this and look into it and not just sit on a bad decision because it's convenient. I brought up many factors that are honest and fair and I'm here for my 180 seconds again. It's so weird, like, you know, this building, I can't find fairness in it. There's nothing to be at. If, if, if the floor was fairness and I was drugging like fabric, I couldn't find it. That's it. Any files? I'll see you again soon. I won't or I will, but either way, you'll hear.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DuBecque. Is there any other member of the public here in Town Council chambers that would like to participate? Seeing none, hearing none, I'm going to go those. Oh, I will note for the record, Councilmember Reed is here and present 7:04 PM during our first public participation speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone here virtually that would like to participate at this time? Once again, please remember to unmute yourself. Like to participate. Hearing none, I'm going to close both participation. We have one appointment tonight. I move that Town Council adopt Resolution 23-037, resolve the Town Council hereby a first selectman's appointment of Marjorie Bucci of 358 Wheeler Road to the Housing Authority with a term ending October 31st, 2007, serving as a tenant of the property overseen by the Housing Authority as required by Connecticut general statutes in Chapter 4, Section 18 of the Town Charter. Is there a second?
Second.
It comes from Councilmember Martin. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this appointment's a little bit different than some of the ones you typically deal with here on council. The, um, this, this, uh, this resident, Marjorie Ms. Bucci, is a resident of Fairway Acres, which is, as you know, the property that's overseen by the Monroe Housing Authority pursuant to both state statute and our, and our charter. One seat on the Monroe Housing Authority is to be filled by a resident of Fairway Acres, as we refer to as a tenant commissioner. There, the state statute provides a process that is different than what is provided in the Town Charter. I asked for our Town Attorney's legal opinion in this regard. He did provide one to me. I attached that opinion to your, it's in your packet, which outlines the process by which the Housing Authority should take pursuant to the statute. What was determined was that while the Chair, Ms. Hudson Brown, the Chair of the Housing Authority, provided me the actions that the Housing Authority took, appears that they had every intent to provide a, an open election process, but it did not meet the strict requirements of the statute. Specifically, there was not a petition for an election to be conducted and received by the Housing Authority. So as provided in the Town Attorney's opinion, if no petition is timely made, then the first selectman shall appoint the resident commissioner following our process outlined in the charter. So considering kind of the entire situation, the totality of the circumstances, and pursuant to all of that, including the Town Attorney's opinion, I am making the appointment of Ms. Bucci to the Housing Authority as referenced in the resolution, and I would ask that the council approve that, approve that appointment so that the, the tenant commissioner's seat can be filled with, with Ms. Bucci.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this appointment? Councilmember Mauer.
Um, forgive me if I just didn't see it in the letter, but do you know the date that the, uh, that the termination or resignation of the former member was?
I don't have that exact date at my fingertips.
Was it over 90 days ago?
It probably was. I'd have to go back. So it was an unusual, it wasn't necessarily a resignation. It was someone who got ill and then was no longer residing. So it was kind of one of those, but the exact date, I know at a certain point I was informed that the resident was no longer, um, in fact, that individual that had that seat was no longer residing at Fairway in the town of Monroe. So, um, but, um, you know, but I would think, and again, I, I don't know if that's Frank that joined the call, um, he was going to be joining the call. My understanding was that nevertheless, you know, petition wasn't, there was never a petition.
The reason I ask is number four of the statute specifically provides 90 days, 90 days as the window for which then the selectman can make an appointment, and it has to be 90 days either after the notice of the petition of the pending application, which didn't happen correctly, so that doesn't.
Right.
Or the, or the expiration of the term, um, which is what would allow, so I, I don't want us.
Well, my understanding.
Making an appointment that is not properly timed.
My understanding from Frank's letter is that the, because the statute wasn't followed, the charter would control, and the charter provides that I make appointments approved by the council.
Got it.
That's my understanding. He was going to join. Let me just see, uh, let me just see if he's.
Just has a question on the point. Thanks. Okay, thanks. He's calling right now.
Can you hear me? We can.
Okay.
Thanks. So we're on the appointment to the Housing Authority.
Okay.
And one of the questions from Councilmember Mauer came up in regards to the, there's a 90-day window that's discussed in the statute, and there was a question as to whether or not we were in that 90-day window. And I, I'd relay that my understanding from your opinion was that because other aspects of the statute weren't followed strictly anyway, that it merely followed charter authority, which was the first selectman confirmed by the Town Council, but that's kind of what we wanted to make sure that we were interpreting your opinion correctly. And Jason, obviously, if I'm not categorizing it properly, please.
Yeah, no, thanks for jumping on. It's, it's section four of the statute basically says that it passes to the appointing authority after 90, 90 days after the Housing Authority provides notice of a pending appointment or the expiration of the term. And I just wanted to make sure that either we were outside that window or that there's a rationale that protects us from not following the statute to the letter.
Yeah, so I did an analysis on, on the statute at Ken's request. It's a, it's a quirky, a quirky type of appointment procedure. Basically, to summarize, the statute vests independent authority in the Housing Authority to basically make their own appointments based upon a number of statutory provisions that give them that authority. In this particular case, none of the statutory criteria underlying were timely met, and as a result, it would default back to the appointing authority pursuant to charter. So I deem this appointment to be no different than any other appointment as a result of the underlying, you know, I don't want to call it a failure, but, because it's not really a failure, it's really an optional authority for the housing authorities. They don't have to undergo this procedure, and in fact, in order to do so, it's, in my opinion, it's quite cumbersome, to be honest, because you have to petition and do other things. And as you indicated, Jason, there's other time constraints imposed upon them. But I, I, I do, it is my opinion that all of those quote unquote contingencies or underlying conditions of precedence were not met or are otherwise ripe for Ken to make this point.
So, so we're, we are either outside of that 90 days or you, you believe that we still have the authority even though we are not outside that 90 days?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anything else, Jason?
That's it for me.
Okay. Any other discussion on this appointment? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-037, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, ayes as fast as nine to zero. Action item, item A, Town Council Command, Science Education, Health, Public Safety Matters, Madam Vice Chair.
We've not had a meeting since our last meeting.
Thank you. Town Council Command, Planning and Zoning, Public Works and Park and Recreation Matters, Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had a meeting since our last meeting.
Thank you. Anything from Councilmember Martin?
Nothing.
Nothing. Thank you. Strategic Planning Committee, meeting we have not met since RLS, meeting when we approved the Capitol projects. All right. Item E, EMS Building Committee, Councilmember Rooney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing really has changed over there as far as the building is concerned. Trying to get a completion date finally of floor and things of that nature by May 23rd. It's kind of the date that I have in mind, but there was a situation that's been brought to my attention about, maybe about three months ago, Craig, the Assistant Chief, brought to my attention a situation of a compressor. Mr. Kreis is in the audience. From what I understand, there's a compressor there. It wasn't part of the original budget for building this, but it's something that the Fire Department uses to put pressure in the tanks to help start the vehicles, if I'm correct. I don't know anything about fire engines and also to evacuate, I guess it would be CO2 or monoxide when you start the vehicles, and I guess that has gone bad. So at this point, we have to look at, you know, maybe some ideas on how we get that replaced, and we need, I talked to Josh Kreis today about it to get some ideas. So I guess in the process of, I, I know Craig had got a price on it originally, but we want to make sure that the Fire Department gets what they need. So that's kind of where we are with that. But I, you know, I, I don't know how we're going to go about it, but we certainly have to find out what is actually needed. I believe they put an auxiliary compressor there in the meantime to help that situation. So we're just looking into it to see exactly what they need, make sure the Fire Department tells us exactly what they need and figure out how to deal with that, but that's above the, you know, the building project. So, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Rooney. All right. F, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee, Councilmember O'Rourke.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last.
Thank you. And first selectman's update, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. So just a couple of things tonight. One, just wanted to acknowledge that for the 19th year, we've been designated and recognized as a Tree City USA from the Arbor Day Foundation. This is given just to kind of recognize our commitment to community forest management and demonstrating our commitment to responsible tree care. Um, you know, Missy and her team are working towards planning a, an Arbor Day observance again this year, a tree planting ceremony, and that will be upcoming in April. And a whole bunch of business updates for this meeting. First, Norcom Mortgage, which is at 731 Main Street. They had a, they had a ribbon cutting that never happened due to the pandemic, so we have scheduled one with them for April 1st at noon to recognize their being opened. A new business called She Shed, which is going to be opening in Clock Tower Square. Their grand opening ribbon cutting is scheduled for April 1st at 2:00 PM. They will be opening in the space that was formerly occupied by Lorraine Kay, who many of you probably are aware had retired and closed her business. Rebel Tattoo is a new business opened at 292 Main Street. Coastal Hearing Aid newly opened at 388 Main Street. They have a ribbon cutting scheduled March 31st at 1:00 PM. Gunso Kim's World Thai condo is opening up at 535 Monroe Turnpike. That's the Big Y Shopping Center. That's going to be a ribbon cutting on April 29th at noon. Corville Nursery on Barnhill Road, that was formerly Twombly Nursery. They've been there for some time, but they are going to be doing a ribbon cutting on May 5th at 1:00 PM. And at 126 Main Street, a, a new independent gas station with a convenience store has gotten Planning and Zoning Commission approval to open there. That project will also include widening of 25 for a turning lane. That is the former RER, uh, uh, location, for those of you familiar with that. And last but not least, Awesome Toys and Gifts will be a new business opening at 464 Main Street. They are currently in the permitting process and will be opening later this year. That is in the same, um, brick building on 25 that has Verizon and the newly, and the businesses that are in the process of doing their interior outfitting, which would be a butcher shop and a bakery. So that, with Awesome Toys and Gifts, that will fully occupy that building. So I'm glad to be able to report that, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. And last but not least, Councilmember Reed, LNA.
Oh, thanks. I, I wasn't sure if we skipped me, or I apologize if I, if I missed it. You ready?
You go ahead.
All right, awesome. We did meet tonight. We talked about quite a few things. One, it was a commercial tax abatement application. You're going to get an update on, I think, shortly from probably yourself, Mr. Chair, Mr. First Selectman. But we did go through items A through G as well. Number 36 is performing artist engagement agreements. There's, there's three of them actually that are going to be in front of you, typical stuff that we see every year. Resolution 38, which was the sales agreement with Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus. C was number 39, facilitator agreement with Bay State Textiles. Forty being mutual agreement document with Operation Underground Railroad. Number 41, there's going to be various new and revised job descriptions. Forty-two is the revisions to the pay plan for the positions in classified service. And then 43 was the construction contract with Nagy Brothers Construction LLC all reached consensus to come to council.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. I will, I will add just a little bit on Councilmember Reed's report, a little bit more on the commercial tax payment. That was an application for 695 Main Street, Unit C and D, also known as Gulf Oasis. The committee did vote to recommend the abatement as recommended by the Tax Incentive Program. You committee and Town Council will consider that and have a public hearing during our, one of our April meetings. Okay? All right. We will go to unfinished business after a new business. We have two segments of individual donations of $1,500 or greater, and a motion to accept the following donations, which individually exceed $1,500. $2,000 from Village Square, Inc. to the Bicentennial Committee, and $7,500 from Tartaglia Commercial Properties to the Bicentennial Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Vice Chair Lapellis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rooney. Mr. First Selectman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as, as I've reported in the past, the Bicentennial Committee is actively gauging community for sponsorships for our bicentennial celebration, and we're just extremely grateful to these two, uh, these two organizations, Village Square, obviously you're all well aware of as a, a large shopping center here in town, that, that firm, as well as Tartaglia Commercial Properties, which owns several commercial properties in Monroe, with their generous support of the bicentennial celebration, and we're grateful to have them be a part of, of the 200th celebration.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman, and I know we have two members, two or three members of that committee here.
We do.
Two.
Two. So, uh, get to work.
We are.
They are.
We are. Have.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting those two donations, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, ayes as fast as nine to zero. Item B, Pavement Management Update from the Nasty Handigan Ruslin, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I had asked you to have this on the agenda last week with the intention that they would be ready to present this evening. It was, um, we, we, we knew we were kind of cutting it close because he had a, he had some work to do still, but he said he, the, the company reps said he would be ready. Unfortunately, he had a family member that got seriously ill and ended up in the ICU late last week, and we have not been able to get a final report from them just yet. We are back on track to get something middle of this week, hopefully, and we'll have him present at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Item C, Resolution 23-038. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-038, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the sales agreement and any associated documents filed between Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus to consummate the purchase and delivery of a 2020 E1 slash Ford four-by-four mini pumper. Be it further resolved that the Town Council waives 3.3 of the town's purchasing policy with respect to this matter for the reasons as stated by the First Selectman in his memorandum dated March 23rd, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as everyone's aware, we had a town meeting that was done at the end of February where the Capitol Project Appropriation and Bond Authorization was authorized to purchase this equa, this piece of equipment, apparatus for the Monroe Fire Department in the current fiscal year. The Fire Department subsequently commenced their due diligence and found that the lead time to acquire a new piece of apparatus following a formal bid process would be roughly 18 months, which was very concerning. They then researched the used market and identified a vehicle that was immediately available from Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus, which was only two years old and had less than 4,000 miles on it, and offering the vehicle for a cost that is below the currently authorized bond authorization at $325,000. They've, the far, uh, department has submitted documentation showing that it is a favorable price compared to a limited number of similar used units that are available. Brindley provided a sales agreement, which the Town Attorney reviewed along with the bid waiver process. In that regard, I've outlined for you the section of our purchasing policy that provides for waiver by the Town Council of a formal bid process. And part of that is, is the, is the recommendation from myself. As I've indicated in the memo, I do agree to waive the formal bid process, and the reasons stated are, one, that it is not practical in the purchase of a used vehicle, given that the town cannot craft a request for proposals that indicate, includes detailed bid specifications that would be customary for new apparatus that is built or otherwise configured to such specifications. Two, that it's not in the best interest of the town as a formal bid process and procurement of a new vehicle will require approximately 18 months. And three, that it's not in the best interest of the town as due diligence conducted by the Monroe Fire Department and reviewed by the Town Finance Department has indicated that we do not anticipate that a formal bid process to yield a more favorable outcome.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion? Councilmember Martin.
I have one question.
Yes.
Hopefully that you could answer. It says in the agreement that there's a one-year warranty. Is that, is that normal for the used vehicles or?
I believe so. I would certainly defer. I know that Mr. Kreis is in the audience, and he's the one who's been working with myself and staff on this, on this effort. I welcome him to comment in that regard.
One-year typical, Chris?
So if you think about first-looking new apparatus, you're only going to get a one-year warranty on that. If you think about, this has a commercial chassis on it, you know, Ford pickup truck chassis essentially, if you were to buy one of those, you're going to get a standard powertrain warranty. This vehicle's two years old. That year brings it basically to your typical three-year powertrain type warranties and things like that. We thought it was adequate based on our, we did an onsite inspection of the vehicle with, with our third-party emergency vehicle mechanic. It has, in all regard, in great working order, very minor defects, too strong of a word almost, you know, reflector type things.
Right.
Which the seller will fully hear prior delivery that they're in a posse, and then the one-year warranty on top of that. So based on our inspection, our knowledge of that type of vehicle, we think the one-year warranty, one is standard in the market, but also adequate to cover anything that would fail from a warranty perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything? Councilmember Powell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We also discussed this a little bit in LNA, in addition actually to the warranty question, which was discussed a bit there. We also just discussed pricing and that other used were coming back more and that a new one may come back even higher. and that a new one may come back even higher than we originally budgeted. And due to the other question was whether or not this would, using a used vehicle would shorten the lifespan and therefore cause an earlier expenditure of a larger amount. And due to the only two years, less than 4,000 miles, it would appear that this would not greatly decrease the lifespan of the apparatus and of the equipment. So it's an advantageous purchase in that regard as well. Thank you. Anything else? All right, now, if there's a those in favor adopting resolution 23-038, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. No nays, this passes 9 to 0. All right. Item D, resolution 23-039. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt resolution 23-039. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the facilitator agreement and any associated documents bound between Bay State Textiles Incorporated for textile recycling collection.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. First Selectman. Thank you. So as part of our, as a component of our Sustainable CTE program, we're always looking to seek solutions to reduce the amount of materials under the solid waste stream. We've been researching different options and identified a solution offered by Bay State Textiles, which provides collection boxes that would allow for residents to dispose of textiles. Those boxes would be maintained and emptied on a regular basis by the company. They would in turn remit to the town $100 per ton of recyclable materials. There, this company is utilized by several other towns in Connecticut. We've discussed, our Director of Community and Economic Development, Mr. Holesworth, has been working on this effort and has been in contact with the Conservation and Water Resources Commission as well, which had kind of independently inquired about this concept while we were already negotiating with Bay State Textiles. And they are certainly eager to start this as well. And we're looking to actually, upon approval of this, schedule kind of a kickoff in April, which would be kind of a larger kickoff event that the Conservation Commission would like to participate in. We certainly welcome their involvement and we'd like to get this going. We, this agreement, as you know, one was heavily revised with input from myself and Mr. Holesworth and of course with town attorney Lito leading that rewrite of some of the terms. But the locations would be at the Garter Road facility where we currently have other recycling, such as electronics, and right here on the town hall campus.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just one question.
I saw his hand first. We did discuss this again in L. N. A. And talked about the different types of materials that could be recycled. It seems like it's a very general acceptance of textiles, which is great. It's going to be a service provided to the people of our town, not only at no cost, but also with some money coming back. So I think that's a great thing. And I think this is a great program that you guys have brought to the town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
I just had a quick question. I think this is, in theory, a wonderful thing, but does, will the town have, you said they would be emptying it monthly?
Weekly.
Weekly. Does the town have any oversight of what, I mean, sometimes people just throw junk and...
That will be for them to deal with. And as we had worked into their agreement as well, something that we added to this agreement, we're not, they have to take care of all that off-site. We're not, in other words, they can't empty it and then like leave us with quote unquote, stuff they don't want. They'll have to, they'll be responsible for that. So the intent of this is that it's, you know, not going to add any more burden to town staff or resources.
Okay, so who is it that has oversight of that? Is that Public Works or the Police Department or?
I mean, it being on, you know, on the town hall campus, Public Works typically has the first view on all that stuff. But they would certainly work with Mr. Holesworth, who would be, you know, kind of managing the relationship with Bay State Textiles as part of the Sustainable CTE program. But, you know, as a team, we would certainly make sure it was addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And on all those in favor adopting resolution 23-039, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. No nays, this passes 9 to 0. Resolution 23-041. Madam Vice Chair.
Resolve that the town council, let's start again. I move that the town council adopt resolution 23-041. Resolve that the town council hereby approves the following updates, the job descriptions, and authorizes the First Selectment to implement each on an individual basis as soon as practical. I'm assuming you don't want me to go through them, okay? Revisions as follows. Director of Public Works, Director of Parks and Rec Recreation, Deputy Director in the Public Works Department, Leader in the Public Works Department, Maintainer 2 in the Public Works Department, Maintainer 3 in the Public Works Department, Maintainer 4 in the Public Works Department, Parks Maintainer revised to be in the Public Works Department, Mechanic in the Public Works Department, Landfill Attendant in the Public Works Department, Chief Building Official in the Building Department, Director of Economic and Community Development in the Economic Development Department, Planning and Zoning Administrator in the Planning and Zoning Department, Office Manager in the Planning and Zoning Department, Secretary in the Planning and Zoning Department, Zoning and Wetlands Enforcement Officer in the Planning and Zoning Department, New Job Description, Special Projects Coordinator in the Economic Development Department, General Foreman in the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maurer. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, during my budget presentation and as I discussed further in the memo that I gave you in early March during the budget deliberation process, I've been working with various department heads in regards to these reorganizations to improve town operations. At that time, I discussed in detail the rationale and the financial impact of those changes and the structure of those departments. As you know, those, these changes were all included in the town council's proposed budget. That is currently with the Board of Finance. The changes would obviously require further approval from the town council for implementation, given that these all result in a net reduction in operational expenditures in the current fiscal year and that these would improve operations immediately. I'd like to implement these changes for the remainder of fiscal year '23. We did make final revisions to the job descriptions that were given to you in draft form during the budget process. You have clean and redlined versions of all of them, with the exception, of course, of the two new ones, which would just be clean. In most cases, these are simply housekeeping updates. The, obviously, in the circumstance where the position reports to a different department, that's been revised. And in many of the positions, most of which are the Public Works positions, the most significant change is the position reporting now to the General Foreman, where they previously reported to the Highway Supervisor or in the case of Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Supervisor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And on all those in favor of adopting resolution 23-041, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. No nays, this passes 9 to 0. All right. Item F, resolution 23-042. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt resolution 23-042. And resolve that pursuant to Town Council Chapter X, Number 3, the pay plan for the position in the classified service is hereby amended to as represented by the First Selectment.
Madam Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maurer. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, pursuant to the Town Charter, we maintain a pay plan for those that are in the classified service. As I've been doing every year, I directed our HR director, Craig Hurst, who's here with us tonight to present or to provide to me revisions, proposed revisions to the pay plan during the annual budget process. So the revisions that you have before you are consistent with and reflect the changes that were incorporated in the fiscal year '24 budget as currently proposed by the town council. He's also made changes that incorporate inflationary adjustments and in the case of some of the part-time positions, compliance with the revised state minimum wage.
Thank you. Any other discussion on resolution 23-042? And on all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. No nays, this passes 9 to 0. Item G, resolution 23-043. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt resolution 23-043. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the construction contract and any associated documents bound between Nagy Brothers Construction LLC for the Wolf Park Fields Project.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So as I had reported earlier, we've been working diligently to redefine this project that's been out there for several years. The project was put out to bid earlier this year. Six companies submitted bids for the project, and I directed a bid review team to review the bids and provide a recommendation. They reported back to me that all the bid packages were reviewed. That responses from the two low bids were reviewed in greater detail and determined that they did meet all the bid requirements. They went further into the low bid submitted by Nagy Brothers Construction and determined that the bid was complete and in compliance and met all the requirements that the town had in the RFP. The review team did recommend awarding the contract to Nagy Brothers. Their bid of $555,000 is well below the low bid that was received in the previous RFP process, which the town subsequently, which we determined to not pursue because of the cost at that time. I want to, you know, give some accolades to the team, particularly Miss Yoros and her team for doing a lot of work at the park, which she had town staff take care of some clearing and other things that reduced the amount of work that would have to be done by the contractor. And that certainly helped things quite a bit, as well as the team with Mr. Phillips from DPW and Mr. Holesworth and Mr. Nowacki, all of which were involved to kind of make sure that we were kind of making this project, rightsizing this project and not unintentionally increasing costs simply by some of our requirements or things that really didn't make sense. And they found a lot of solutions to lower costs. So my appreciation to them for that. So this bid would bring us well within the funding that has been identified for the project. There will be one other relatively smaller piece, which will have to come to you later. I'm hoping you'll have it at the next meeting, which will be for the engineering oversight during construction portion. So we'll have another agreement for you on that. But this will be well within the funding we've identified. The contract before you is the standard contract that is in our RFP package that the contractors agreed to in submissions of the bid. As you know, the contract includes the original RFP, all the addendums and the proposal submitted. So it's a very thick document with all the attachments. But at its core, it is the standard agreement that was crafted by the town attorney in preparing our RFP template. So again, my thanks for everyone. And I also would want to thank the Parks and Rec Commission, the Chair, Mr. Stone, who's here as well, who I asked to be on that bid review committee as well. And I know was very involved in the whole process, as was this whole commission in supporting this effort. So anxious to move forward and ask you to move this contract forward so we can start building fields.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Rourke.
Mr. First Selectman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you remind us what the original low bid was that we didn't act upon? How much?
It was around $850,000.
So $850,000 down to 550,000.
555,000.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rooney.
Yeah, if I could just say, I was in Parks and Rec in the inception of this project. I think it dates back to 2010-ish, John? 2008. So that was a long time ago. And, you know, being involved in some construction in the town, you can't help but kind of roll over into peeking at other things and being, you know, the liaison to the Parks and Rec, you know, distant way. Some things kind of came to my attention. So when I went and spoke with Miss Y and Mr. Holesworth, they were very receptive, you know. Picking back on what everybody else is saying, great job, you know, to stick with it, stay with it, because I remember, you know, the fiasco of getting this thing done with the additional parking lot on the side and getting a seal for that. And there's just so much to this project. So to the average community member, it looks like, oh, they put in a field. But there's just a lot to it. Geotechnical surveys, making sure it's not ledge, making sure the fill's going correctly. You know, I was there at the site day, you know, to see, you know, the workforce of contractors there. But through and through, John, great job for finally getting it done. I mean, everybody, yeah. So just like I said, mirroring what everybody else is saying, thank you. The kids need this. You know, the town needs that. You know you need the space. The sports need the space. And it'd be really cool to see it operate. So thanks again.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And on all those in favor of adopting resolution 22-043, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. No nays, this passes 9 to 0. That's it for new business. We do have a matter of unfinished business this evening. Item A, St. Jude School Property and Community Center Project Update. I move that town council enter executive session, inviting the First Selectman and the town attorney to discuss contract negotiations between the Town of Monroe and the property owner of the St. Jude School Properties. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. Any other discussion? All those in favor of entering executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. No nays, this passes 9 to 0. We will enter executive session at 7:49 P. M. Good evening, everyone. Town council's back in session at 8:13. We were out of the executive session. No votes were taken. Item 10 on our agenda is public participation. Is there a member of the public that would like to participate at this time? Hearing none on closing public participation for the evening. I am adjuring this meeting at 8:13 P. M. We will see you all in April.